Phone reading order at seven o'clock. Remind all video equipment needs to be in this designated area. Say the pledge.
Let's leave it at that. Zoom the flag up in the United States of America. And truly the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do roll call. Ben Hug.
Here.
Dan Van Buren.
Here.
Jeff Corpenny.
Here.
We have any guest speakers here tonight?
Yeah, over here.
I don't know if you call me a guest speaker.
Sure.
You want to turn it off? Are you at the insurance company? Just turn me one off.
Okay. He can talk on it.
I can talk through that. I'm Marshal Phelps, Licking County Municipal Court Clerk. And I'm just going out and visiting all the townships and, you know, letting them know that I'm running for reelection and certainly would appreciate your consideration whenever you choose to go vote. This is probably the liveliest township meeting I've been to, at least with the most people. So, because I've been going to many of the township meetings here recently. You've got nice turnout. Citizens like to be engaged in your local government. Yay. That's wonderful. For whatever reasons. Everybody has their rights. Not too sure. But I've been serving as your municipal court clerk for the last six years. Prior to that, I was a Licking County Commissioner for three terms. And prior to that, I served on Mark City Council. So, I'm back again and running again and certainly looking forward to continuing to serve you as your municipal court clerk. So, if you have any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer them.
Anybody have a question? Pretty classy.
I'm not the attraction. I can tell. But if you ever do, feel free to call me. It's pretty easy to get our phone numbers, so I'd be more than glad to answer any questions you might have. We do a lot of traffic violations and criminal violations. And we also have civil cases, evictions for renters and stuff like that. And people sometimes have questions about those type of things. So, I'll be more than glad to help you. And with all the years that I've had in government, I kind of know almost every little corner and niche and everywhere you go, I guess. So, I have a lot of years of experience. And what I have learned is your knowledge because I feel that I've learned it for you. And so, I'll be more than glad to share whatever I know and lead you in a direction.
Can we get ahold of you after you're elected?
Absolutely. I absolutely work all the time. So, I'm there. Easily accessible. Yep, yep. I don't go away after I get elected. I've been doing this for a long time, so I think my record stands for itself. If you don't know me, you can ask anybody that does know my record. They will say that, yep, she's a working person.
Good, thank you.
Uh huh. And I do have... Go ahead, yes.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Oh, I'm glad and thank you for giving me some time. I do have some notepads here if anybody would like to have one. I don't know if you mind if I leave them.
Sure, you can leave.
Yeah, please make sure. And I think my home phone number's on the back.
Oh, right.
So, you can call me at work, you can call me at home. You can call me. Just don't call me bathroom.
That home phone number, is that 24/7?
Pretty much. Pretty much. And good luck to the ones that's running this year here.
We appreciate your time. If you want to stay, you're more than welcome to stay.
I might just stick around for a little bit.
You're more than welcome. Any other guest speakers? Correspondents?
We received some paperwork from Megan Toich, the insurance agent. And they, it's about that healthcare reform. They are taking an independent initiative on that and would like us to fill out, each one of us to fill out a questionnaire and send that back to her. I went ahead and copied her letter and everything, so you guys can read that. And if you guys want to fax it to her or give it to me, and I'll send it back to her.
When did they want to go?
I don't know if it has a date on it.
August 9th.
As soon as possible. Oh, August 9th, yeah. And that was all I have.
Well, I have one thing. I'll say a couple things, but one thing was handed to me tonight. This letter, resident community, I'm gonna read it. Says, Dear Bowling Green Township trustees, several members of the community have formed a group, Friends of Bowling Green Township. We are asking the trustees to be able to use the community building the last Monday of each month at no charge. We would use the building from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Our goal is to bring the community together at local functions. During our first meeting, we saw and documented how dirty the community building is and know we will leave the building much cleaner than we found it. We see our return to Bowling Green Township. Says they're members of the community. I assume that they're most of them from the township if they're starting up a group. What, what's our rental policy?
I'm not sure.
Barb, right offhand, what's the rental policy?
That they leave it as clean as it was when they...
No, fees and stuff like that.
You mean the fees?
Yeah.
Twenty-five for residents, sixty-five for non-residents, and 125 for optioned-earthers.
I mean, it doesn't really say. I don't know if you would...
I don't see any reason why they couldn't use this building. It's just for meeting purposes. Yesterday, I found out that they met. I actually found, I didn't know what it was for. I know Patty had reserved the building. I didn't know if it was for a township meeting of some sort because I know she's researching for a fire station. She's on the comprehensive plan board and also on the appeals board. I personally would have rented the building and I don't agree with trustees getting things free. That's just me. I would have paid for it. It was my daughter's birthday yesterday and I would have rented it. So, my concern would be that we would be missing rentals. So, I don't know why they couldn't use this building if they're not paying.
Anything, Dan?
If it's a community, all going together, they don't see where they need to rent it.
Says...
If it's a community thing.
I'm not saying they should have to rent it. I just don't want to see it cut into other money that would have come in and already did that.
Statement here says, "Our goal is to bring the community together at local functions." I don't know what local functions would be that's going to be based up to the community. I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have any problem with it.
Why don't we put it on the agenda and then we can learn more about it, who's heading up this group that would be able to speak to the board about it?
Is that all right? Ed turned it in today. Is there a table until next meeting? You guys want a decision tonight?
I'd like to have a decision. As possible, if I'm going to take it.
I mean, I don't have no problem with it.
Couldn't they just use that building if it's available? And then if it's not available, that way you're not losing a rental fee. If it's not available, just they could meet over here.
Would that be an option for you guys? If somebody rents it, then...
Yeah, we could change it.
We could pencil it in for you guys.
Sure.
If somebody rents it, then maybe you guys...
Then we could change our page.
Okay. Let's set it at that right now.
Just beat up the number in case...
Yep, that way if somebody decides to, you know, they want to rent, you know, and pay.
Right. And we'll write ours.
Sure.
If it's nice, you could even meet under the shelter or something if it's not conflict with whoever's renting it.
What are the days or times this is going to be if it's going to conflict with other meetings? Six o'clock on the last Monday of the month. Our committee is on Tuesday, so that won't affect it.
Well, I'll make a motion that we let the group, Friends of Bowling Green Township, use the building the last Monday of each month from 6:00 to 8:00 at no charge as long as there's no paid rentals that precede that.
Yeah. I mean, if they have no problem having it in here, if there is a paid...
Right, we can, we'll work for it.
You know, just work for it.
Can you do whichever, we'll work.
Still have fun.
Yeah, flexible.
Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
I'd like to have a further discussion on that. How are we, we're setting a precedence here. How are we going to handle the next group that comes in that wants to do the same thing? And they might call themselves the Friends of National Road or something. I mean, what are we going to do then?
We'll cross that road when we get there.
Because you really can't give one group precedence over any other group.
Well, this is just residents of township. We want to get together. This isn't, this is just residents.
Does the law drop? Doesn't it drop?
If you're going to do this for an unlimited amount of time or for a trial of time to see how it works out, see if we don't run into other problems we aren't anticipating.
Let's try for the next three months.
Want to add that to the motion?
So, this will be setting it for the next three months at 6:00 on the last Monday. It's supposed to be for August, September, and October.
Do roll call now. Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Can you read the actual motion?
Ben made a motion to allow the group to use the building at no charge as long as there is no paying rentals for the next three months.
Okay, well, we need to amend the motion then if that's what it says. Well, you do have the few months in there.
Yeah.
Last Tuesday of the month on September, October.
Last Monday.
Or last Monday of the month on the September, October.
Yes. What is your vote?
Yes.
The only other correspondence I have is kind of fall underneath the trash. I had a phone call complaint from a resident Brownsville about the trash not getting picked up. I made a call to Big O, talked to him about it, wanted to discuss with him what the problem was. After the complaint, I drove down 668 and I noticed there was another one that wasn't picked up. So, I called Big O, talked to him, found out what the problem was, and they said that they had a new driver. The next Wednesday, I drove by, everything was picked up. So, both phones, I guess, I need a drive. Jeff?
Yeah, I, to change, you get that receipt for copies I left down here. Well, I made you another one. There's also a receipt for Lowe's for the light bulbs in the community park. You had gotten these records of these anonymous, but there's one missing, the one I was actually looking for had to do with the trash. It's not in that pile.
Okay, I'll look for it again.
What's this receipt for? I don't have to be funny.
Copies. You were here at the park meeting. I gave you all copies, you and Dan. Left one down here for Jenny, heard that receipt was on it.
What?
I gave you copies, so the only thing you didn't get is I didn't have it yet.
Copies of what?
Well, I'll go to that next for correspondence. It's under Park Committee, or I can do it now. This is the only thing that you don't have, and that's the photograph that was taken after the park meeting.
I didn't get a copy of anything.
Okay, let me see if I have one here for you. I'm not going to give you my originals or my copies. Actually, Barb has the original. But Dan, Van Duster, have it. It doesn't say where it's from. What's the board?
That's that receipt that I saw. I had no clue what it was.
Photograph's the only thing we didn't have. I would have made copies, but I didn't take them to let you know.
I want a receipt that I was asking you guys about at the last meeting.
Oh.
Is this for Jenny?
Yeah, I think there's another sheet for that. You guys got them at the park meeting and I also read it to you.
I didn't receive a copy of this. That's our meeting. I wasn't at the park meeting.
I left it here for you. Dan and Van Duster, they asked for it and they were here and they both got it.
I didn't get a copy.
I also read it, went over it with the park committee. Some of you don't have this. So, I guess...
Should be another page, Jane.
Which one are you missing there?
You gave her those two.
What are you missing?
No, I got them. You gave her those two and that one.
It's May 23rd. You don't have the one, David, May 23rd, top 23.
This one says May 23rd.
You got it. You got all this, Norm?
No, I don't have August 9th.
August 9th. So, do you want to go back during the park committee or do you not? You already heard it. You were at the meeting.
That has to be the park, but we're going to say park committee.
Okay, we'll wait down. We'll save that for that.
Do you have a copy of the letter that I requested from you that you, your response to your risk management recommendations?
I have my own. I gave it to Ben, if you recall. I left one down here for you and I have a folder with my own in it.
I did not get a copy of that. I need a copy of it.
Ben has one. You know, I'm not going to run a copy store.
Can you scan it and email it to me?
Do you want me to read it to you?
I want a copy.
How many times do I have to leave copies down here for you of the same thing?
I never received a copy of it.
Do you have one in your pile? Because I'm not going to give you my, it's not going to be like the bond, the game you've played with my bond.
I did not play in games with your bond.
Telling me two years later you didn't get it. And telling me that I didn't do what I was supposed to do. And then at the last meeting, all of a sudden, you found it.
Yeah, I did.
I'm not going to let that happen. No copies are mine walking out of here.
All you need to do is scan it and send it to me. It doesn't even cost you anything.
On the bond, I didn't have that paperwork. And you tried to tell me I wasn't bonded, and that's not true.
I did not try and tell you that you weren't bonded. I asked for a copy of it. I didn't say you weren't bonded. I knew that you did it. I just could not find a copy of it.
I see you brought me a copy tonight.
I did.
Okay.
So, where is the copy that I requested?
I've left it for you. Ben has a copy of it. I have told you I have a copy in my folder here. And I'm just not leaving it because I have, if you need another one, I'll go get a copy for you, but I'm not giving you any more copies if I don't have it.
Tell her to take the picture of it.
So, you're requesting a copy.
Yeah, I've requested a copy many times.
And you've gotten it many times. I don't know what I can do for you. I tried to get them, bring a copy machine down. We could fix it right now. There's also some correspondence about the grant, and I assume we're going to put that under unfinished business since I don't see a single bidder here tonight to answer questions.
All right, we'll move on to reports. Anything on the safety area? Hey, we talked about this a couple months ago, Jenny, about the protective gear, like t-shirts, safety glasses, stuff like that.
Yeah.
That we get a $300 credit from insurance company, right? I guess, I think it's wise that we do that because after everyone's all done, how should we go about doing that? Just pick out stuff in order for...
Yeah, and then we'll send the receipts in.
So, I mean, what do you guys think? The t-shirts? If it's there for a credit from insurance company, might as well take advantage of it.
Some of the yellow shorts.
Do you want to do a couple shirts, a couple sweatshirts for everybody or something?
Couple shirts, probably.
Sorry if I get some stuff together for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Under safety, does anyone have a report of what happened out here with our gas, our diesel tank? Nobody called me and told me what was going on, but I'd love to know.
Oh, it just started leaking. I fixed it. That's simple.
Pretty good explanation.
Just started leaking, we took care of it.
I think everything else is pretty much at par.
And I didn't call you because I knew I couldn't get ahold of it.
But it's back and it's in service, right?
Yep.
Thank you for doing that. Nobody here from the fire company? Zoning? Nothing for zoning? Zoning appeals?
Nothing now.
I have a question about the zoning appeals. When the hearing was decided last meeting, I listened to it from a request I have in the sheriff's office. Apparently, you reconvened and had a meeting, set the date for the 10th, and then it got changed to the 17th. My question is, since it is a public meeting, either I missed it or didn't see it, but I didn't see any legal ads running.
It was in there.
When was it running?
Didn't he ask us when we had the meeting?
The Saturday before the meeting, I believe. The Saturday or Sunday before the meeting. I don't have that copy with me, but I can scan it and email it to you.
I'd rather have a physical copy of it. And also, I had asked a long time ago for copies of the junk meeting. I wanted a physical copy of the cassette. I noticed that now you're using a digital recorder of some kind. But our records and retentions are for a tape and it's $1.50 for the public to purchase it. So, what are we doing? When, when did it get changed? Did I miss something?
I just haven't updated the retention schedule.
So, you can't get a tape anymore? You're set tape?
Our dubbing machine isn't working anymore.
So, what are you going to do? Give a disc or something to people with the digital file on it?
Yes.
Under zoning, since there's no report, I guess we blew by that, but I'd like to, I didn't see anything on reports unless I missed it about the new build on Oak and Woods. So, I don't know how we find out about that, but there's a new home there that I don't see, didn't see on any reports.
That's been a while, a while after it went through.
Didn't see it on any reports, so...
We got them.
Yeah.
She didn't mention it verbally and I didn't see it.
She put the paper in front of us on a desk here. And we got them. At least I did. You did too, didn't you, Andy?
I did. Ah, comprehensive plan.
Yes, I met with two representatives from the Licking County Planning Commission, and they're putting together a book about the national road. And met with them and walked through Brownsville with them, discussed some of the things that are still here, some of the things that are gone, listened to some suggestions from them that may help improve the township, and told them that I definitely would take those suggestions under advisement and leave with my committee. So, we will be having a meeting at some point in the county.
When you guys decide, Dave, can you let me know?
Definitely.
Awesome. They're putting together like a book.
It's like a book. I've got a book for the historic road.
Ain't much left in the village, is there?
We found some interesting things.
There's still a few out there.
We talked to some of the different residences as we went around the community.
Awesome. You definitely interest in that, so I'd love to know. Uh, park committee?
Yeah. Auctioneer Howard Seal over has a question he'd like to ask.
I just wondered if it'd be all right if, if I had a phone line put in for credit card machines, and I'd pay the bill.
This was brought up when the park committee meeting and we just had a discussion in the room. You know, a couple of questions were on who's going to pay to have it installed.
I'll take care of it.
Anything like that.
And any, the monthly bills come directly to me.
To you, okay. What, you know, you're going to have a phone jack in there, right?
Yeah.
That you're going to plug into?
Just we'd plug them with...
What would keep somebody else that rented the building from using that? You know, I don't know, I just...
If they plugged in a phone, I mean, yeah, I'm sure they'd be able to use it.
Right. What else would work off of that? Like, just... You understand what I'm saying? I mean, I just don't want somebody else force it with it if that were to be put in there. Do you have any idea what, you know, what that would be to call, you know, cost to put in or anything like that?
No, I'd have to get with, I didn't want to look into that until I seen if it was all right with you. Like I say, it's just so I can accept credit cards.
Right. And that'll help the, help your business through the options that'll...
Well, hopefully.
Right, right.
Is that going to allow you internet auctions too or just...
No, no.
Just for, just use credit cards?
Just for the credit card sweep and that's it.
Are you thinking like it was just one phone jack?
Yeah, right up.
Is it a phone jack or like a cable line?
I'm, I'm assuming it would, you know...
I think it's a phone jack.
So, just like one outlet is what it would be?
Yeah, we're just, my machine will plug into it. When I'm done, I take it and leave. You know, just, I'm done with it.
Right, right.
If he decides not to use it, where does the phone go back to the township or what?
Would it be, would it be a contract on it? I mean, just, just say you used it for four months and said, hey, this is not working. And what, is there a contract on it or would it fall back on us? Everything would be in your...
No, no. It'll, everything will be in my name. You'll be under no obligation of any kind.
What do you guys think?
I don't care.
What do you think, Jeff?
And you know, if I decided, well, it's not, it's not doing me any justice in, say, six months, I'll just have it disconnected.
Right. If we, if we allowed you to do that, where would you want to put it in there? Does it matter?
Up front, you know where my cashier usually is?
Right.
Right there. Because he'll have to swipe the card when they check out, like they, when they pay. The machine will be there and you can just swipe the card.
Right.
So, right there.
Before the front doors, yeah. Just to the, does anybody like the panel?
Yeah, yeah. Where my cashier sits. Somewhere on that, you know, in that area right there would be great.
Do you have a question, Dave?
Yeah, Howard, I don't know if you're aware of that. You can get a little swipe card because on your cell phone, it don't cost nothing. You know, you just...
What I was, I don't know what you're talking about. It's $2.50 per swipe.
Okay.
But I can't, that's great, but I can't print them a receipt, Ruth.
Right, right.
That's all.
Does anybody else have any questions about that?
With that machine, it prints a receipt where they have to sign and they get a copy, I get a copy.
What would prevent somebody from plugging in there and making all kinds of...
That's who, that's who.
I mean, are there methods that allow a person not to do that?
I can check on that, but like I say, bottom line, I'm going to be responsible.
Because I, if we're going to have a phone in there and it belongs to somebody else, I don't know what kind of legalities we have doing that. And another thing I'd like to be able to do is if we had an emergency, if we could plug in and use it for that purpose.
Well, yeah, yeah. If you had a phone and something happened, you have to plug in, call the firehouse or...
Or we could do it on your phone, though, instead of the town's phone.
Well, it's going to, whether it's, even if it's in hibernation when I'm not there...
Oh, you might be able to do that.
There's still going to be a monthly fee involved.
Right.
If I can get it put in hibernation, I'll do that one. I'll normally use it when I'm there. I don't know if they can do such a thing, but I could ask.
That has to do with that being like a lock on it.
How soon does he want to do that?
How many people are gonna come turning the plug in for it?
Okay. I got an auction at 24.
I assume they can do it pretty fast.
I gotta call them and, you know...
Okay, any questions?
Well, I was wondering, I know since you're wanting to do this so you have receipts and that, and we don't want people to tamper with it, why not get a box that has a lock on it to put around it so that people don't mess with it? Make sure the trustees have a key and you have a key to get into it for in case of emergencies and/or if you need it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I don't know how many people are actually... Nobody's gonna bring anything to camp or anything to actually use it, you know? It's just a phone line.
Just a phone line.
No, it would just be, it's right across phone line, not internet.
No, no, no. Just a jack put in, hooked up, you know, from the outside, and I plug my credit card machine in.
Does that, does that local call for your...
Yeah, yeah.
You can block long-distance calls on, if you don't like it. That way at least some of it is locally, there's no additional charge.
I don't look for very many people use it because who...
I mean, who's gonna have to come walk over there with their phone in their hand and plug it in?
Unless you got one at the office, maybe wanna try it out.
I don't have a problem with it. That's gonna better if it's...
I don't have a problem with it.
Maybe we'll wanna keep it around, so...
You know, it's more of a convenience for the customers that come to the auction. And like I say, as far as the bill, I'll be totally responsible for that. I mean, put it in my name. I'm here, that's...
Right. I mean, they make a motion, it's gonna be all kinds of stuff, it's gotta be in his name. Service gotta be in your name, bill's gotta be in your name.
Exactly.
He's all responsible.
Any hookup fee's gonna be in his name, any disconnection fee's gonna be, you know, his responsibility.
Yeah, I'll pay for the hook up, the, you know...
I'll second the motion.
Is that a motion?
I don't know, can you read it?
Oh, I thought you had one.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, Howard, I really don't.
Okay.
You know? I make a motion that we allow... What's your last name?
Howard Sealover.
Howard?
Sealover.
Sealovers? To put in a phone jack in a community building. All bills will be in his name. The plan, I guess, will be in his name. Connection fee, disconnection fee, everything will be in his name.
Responsible for all.
Township bills, you know?
Business owners, if anybody wants them.
Do we have a motion?
Do we need to state where we're gonna place it or something?
Yeah. He's gonna put it right down on the front wall.
Just let me know when they wanna do it, and I'll make sure I'm here.
Okay.
Can a motion be seconded by Jeff? We'll do roll call. Dan?
Yeah.
Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah, should just be a line in the phone jack in that one.
Where will that line come from?
Route 40.
There'll be one down that alley somewhere.
Yeah, there's gotta be one.
There's one coming across that alley.
Okay. Just have them get ahold of me, get ahold of me, we'll meet down there.
Okay, I'll give them a call tomorrow and get on if it's okay.
Yeah, that's fine, definitely. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Awesome. You're more welcome to hang around, Mark. That's all.
I'll get out of here, but you take care of your bills. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Howard. Anything else under park committee?
Do you want the minutes of our park committee meeting, or do you just want to give you the synopsis of what we talked about in the bill?
Do you have copies of them?
I have copies in the minutes.
Yeah, if you just wanna leave them out here, people can look at it.
Put those in. Here is what you'd ask for on the swings.
What's the colors?
You asked me to go up, and these are those. That is the non-wood swings. That's the five colors you have available. Each swing is three hundred and twenty-five dollars each. That is with the chains. You can choose from those five colors. You also asked about an American flag. I got, I contacted the Annan of Ohio in Koshakton. They don't really do any sales out of Koshakton, but they do have a company they deal with online. I wasn't sure what size that flag is, so I have the price for four by six, five by eight, six by ten. Two different textures. They have a bulldog cotton and a tough tex. The tough tex is really more wind resistant and probably what we would be more... I'm not speeding for you, but the bulldog cotton is kinda like if you have a colonial home. It's more traditional.
Okay.
But the best hold-up and wind-resistant flag is the tough tex.
Okay.
And I have that on the four by six, five by eight, six by ten.
What's out there now?
I don't know. I didn't pull it down to major, so I just give you the prices of all.
Yeah.
And I will give you that also. You asked for the price of a state flag. There is the price for those. If you wanna look at that and revert that back to the park committee. Also on that paper is the list of supplies to try to finish up. The bricks, which we've been at for some time. Thirty bags of concrete, which we probably know is a little over by, but it's easier to have.
Right. That's fine, we'll take it back.
Two or three extra.
Sure.
Than not having enough. Rebar and gravel. I went back and looked, you kinda have a gravel pit back there. If we do this, we might be better to put a little gravel down underneath it and as we spoke, a couple holes in the concrete to get in at the gravel.
Yeah. We can use that gravel that's back there that's left over.
That's what I would assume, but that's what I put on your list. Kinda shooting for August 20th. It's a Tuesday, maybe about eight thirty in the morning. Dan said he had a concrete mixture he might be able to drag up here.
August 20th at eight thirty?
Eight thirty, let's do it. Well, it's early.
Sure.
Cool. Because if this old guy wants to do inside, we're shaking. So...
Okay. Awesome. We'll have that, those materials here for you.
Okay.
All right then.
I will get with, I talked with Greg and some other people on that.
Thank you. Okay. Do, I mean, it's really, if you guys, what color swing? Did you guys talk about a color?
Well, we did that afterwards, remember? And that, you asked me to do that. I've done it. Now, if you wanna revert it back to us, I would be glad to do that, but... I just sort of did what you asked.
We already allocated money several months ago to buy at least one swing.
Yeah, we did that when we put the park on.
I don't recall that.
We did that, we did.
Point of information, if you did do that. It's been a while since the park committee's been given any kind of budget since you spent all the money on the park recently. I'd like to have information on what the balance is. And I did ask for all those receipts, and I didn't see them yet. It turned out I didn't really need all the receipts to complete the operation, Roundup Acquirements. Barb provided me with a copy of the invoice marked paid.
So let's finish talking about this stuff.
Okay, well, I'd like to see that motion because I certainly don't recall the motion just before the swings. The last one I recall was the other swings.
I think they made a motion, the news in there. When we put that swing up, swing set up, that we was gonna go ahead and put a big swing up on the swing.
I don't recall an actual, maybe it'd be pretty old if it was one.
Yeah, and Don was in there. I thought we did.
The only thing this board did that I recall on swings... On swings, we, this board did move a motion to take no other actions at this time on the residential swings that are in there. But as far as the other swing, I don't recall our board discussing it, or your board.
Yeah, I, you know, if you wanna make a motion for two swings, make a motion for two swings, give us the samples back, and we'll call a meeting. We'll pick colors and I'll get to it.
I don't know about two swings, though, because the first day you come down the other day and helped me take that one down, it's kinda, I felt like it needed to be pulled out because it had some bolts hanging out. But I believe it could be repaired, so I don't know if we need two or one.
I did too. That looks, if we're gonna put something up, these are non-wood. Look like they are much more...
Where are they from down there?
Down here, the owner person.
Before we move forward, I'd like to, like I said, I'd like to see the balance of the park committee and where it stand after the recent expenses.
Is that what the other one was, more of a five foot?
Yes, they were five foot. Now, if you want some real bright colors, they had some like...
Real nice ones.
Real bright colors. I did say they were a little more...
Sure.
I didn't know if we wanted stand-out orange and hot pink.
When's the next park committee meeting?
Uh, September. I mean, if you wanna bug all that and throw it back to us, we'd be glad to do that. So just let us know that you want to do it. And I, once you approve it, that's the check. We can go down and make the order and get the check from you and give it to them. And it takes about three weeks to get them.
September what is the next meeting?
Thirteenth, third Tuesday of September. It's kinda late in the year.
Do you know what the balance is?
I don't, not on hand, I do not.
Do you know if we have a thousand dollars in there? Six fifty of two swings?
Probably, but I don't know for sure.
I don't wanna move a motion until we know if we have the funds.
Probably, yes, three hundred and five, yes, that's...
I'd like to at least get one swing in there, you know? Dog's been down just to play with the kids and...
Well, you figure it out, let me know, and I will...
Well, I'll move on that. I'd like to make a motion that the park committee purchased one of the, I guess, the all-weather swings. From...
There's the...
No, that place right there.
Down Home Lawn Furniture, it's on West Pike and Hopewell, for a cost of three hundred and twenty-five dollars. I'm gonna leave the color up to you guys, I don't care.
Okay.
I don't think you guys really need to wait for your next meeting to assign the color, just pick the color.
Oh, okay. If you want us to pick, we'll pick for you.
Do a roll call. Dan?
Yeah.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
We'll find out by next meeting what the balances are, call the fund.
Okay.
See if we can move on to another one for that, okay?
Sure, well, we can definitely do the one.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go down, order.
The, on the flags, the tough tex was the one that you think's gonna stand out better in the weather?
Yes, that's, as I talked to him afterwards, the one that was more wind resistant. And the other one was more... But I don't know if we need it. I know we're all over here, but I don't think we need to rely on the other one.
Right.
It's sewn, it's a cotton material, where the others... Since ours is up twenty-four seven, the tough tex would probably be the best.
Four by six was fifty-four ninety-five, five by eight was seventy-four ninety-five, and the six by ten was a hundred and nineteen ninety-five.
Yes. And the state flag is down at the bottom. Do you ask for that also?
State flags, highest state flag is the state flag of Ohio.
Yes.
Is four by six is forty-nine ninety-five, and five by eight is sixty-nine ninety-five. What are you guys' feelings on that? I know, can I just hit on it real quick?
Well, we said this one was getting kinda frayed.
Right.
And the concept is that's not really good, so...
Ron?
Yeah. It's light, smooth, tolerant. Also through heritage. So I think it's loaded or one of those places, or the same, you could, that would be okay. That's my...
Well, don't give it to you.
Yeah. Well, no. Sometimes if they got a doctor like you have to do, now, I'm very confident, I don't blame them. They got prices on their places, so...
Don't do that.
Yeah. You know, just like everybody else. To go...
I don't think it's a six by ten, I don't think it's that big.
But I'd rather see guys...
No, I don't think it is either.
This is six by ten.
Yeah, they need that big.
This is a close. He had asked to make sure that it was from Ohio.
Right, I asked him.
These flags are made in Koshakton.
At least made in the United States.
Right.
We can, I guess, set aside for me to do it. And I'd like to see the flag up there. That would be four hours. What do you guys think? What do you think, Jeff?
Well, the company that we got that flag for and flag with, they have a program. If you, I don't know what all the guidelines are on it, but you have to take it up and down so many times and inspect it. And if it's only frayed past a certain point, you can send it back and repair it. So one way that could be done is if we purchase two, I don't know their cost or anything, but they do these repairs for free. We own two of them, then we could have one being repaired and always have one up.
How many times has that one been inspected? It's probably never been down yet. I'm sure you can have the document what it's been.
I'm just saying, there are stipulations with that program because they can only repair it so many times. They cut it and then they resell it. So if it's frayed too far in, then you can't do it.
Was there any kind of warranty on that one? Or just because it's not that old?
Well, any kind of outdoor flag is not gonna, I mean, it's probably... I sell flags, and I know that they, if they're out twenty-four seven, then you're lucky if you get a year out of it without.
What are your guys' thoughts on that?
Well, we checked on that. This flag that we have is supposedly one of those we can send back in. But you gotta do that periodically. You gotta take it down like every couple months and pay to send it in, to have them check it.
Sure.
Come back to keep that, and if we've not done that...
That's probably...
That's muted. And then you get into the cost of sending back and paying to get it back. And I know these flags, they're not, it's money, but they're not overly expensive. If you figure six times a year, you're gonna have to take your flag down and make it and then have to check it. Why don't we just buy one or wears out? Buy another.
Is there a light on that flag? Our pickup was sixty-nine dollars, but you might pick the check up.
The sixty-nine? Well, I have to, I mean...
You're doing that Roy Sawyer.
Sawyer.
Sawyer? Now, you want one of the Annas?
Yeah. Oh, I do.
And that, we go to that park.
Yeah, that's fine. What'd you say, seventy bucks?
Whatever it is.
Is that what you wanna spend on it, seventy?
Just make sure you get the right size, because that hole's rated for the size it's on.
Let's replace it once there. Whatever, if they don't pick up, I'll pick up, that's fine. I don't have a problem with it.
That's one of those things I order and then they send it to us.
Okay.
So I will have to use my visa.
Okay.
Unless somebody wants me to use their visa.
We're gonna give you a check.
Yeah, but not to order, I'll have to...
If you don't wanna order, let me know, I'll order it. I don't care, it doesn't matter.
I know Jack, I know where he lives.
I don't know.
But there may be some tax tipping.
We'll be taxed, we'll be taxed exempt, we'll be taxed exempt, so no taxes.
More about shipping. Say you wanted a four by six... Say you wanted a four by six...
Replace it with whatever's there.
Whatever's there. So, yeah.
Find out what's there.
I'll get it coming towards...
Do you guys just wanna hold off on the Ohio flag? I don't care.
Yeah.
Okay. I can keep this?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for getting all that information. Had some stuff turned in here from Barb. Rentals. See, yeah, Martin, thanks. Rentals for July on the building, there was four of them. Brownsville senior citizens. Ralph. Is it Barry?
Burry.
Burry. Betty Stewart funeral, and from Patty Bowlin. The only one, there was one that was paid for, it was a twenty-five dollar rental from Ralph. August bookings. There's nine of them. Pretty booked up that one. Do you guys despise it or anything? You guys despise it?
We got it.
You got nothing for the twenty-five dollar? Unfinished business?
Hang on a second. Still have the Park Committee. You guys were both at that meeting. I presented this to the board. You have copies of it. This is a letter I'm gonna send in to finish up the obligations contractual that we have. So, I'm gonna sign it if you'd like to, you can as well.
You need to make a motion. You need to make a motion with that letter before it gets sent.
There's no statutory requirement for that, so, you do have copies of it. If you want a motion, you can make one.
Well, sure, the rest, that doesn't need to be sent unless it goes in front of the board, Jeff.
It's a requirement to finalize the grant.
Would you read it out loud for everybody, please?
I did that last meeting.
Would you read it out loud for the public here, please?
I'd be glad to do that. This is in response to the letter that you have copies of, which I already read that. Park Committee has, each one of their members has a copy. Heard me read before. Uh, to Margie at the Operation Roundup Foundation. Thank you for sending the follow-up letter dated May twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, and reminding us to provide this required final written documentation, wrapping up the grant-funded project. And I had to give reason why it took so long. I spoke with her on the phone, and she was very helpful, allowing us to extend the time that we were supposed to send this back. I explained to her that we had to take it to the Park Committee, and then a couple weeks later, we come to this board. The reason for the delay in response is because two trustees refused to sign the check to pay the vendor for full amount with the hurricane spinner until the May board meeting. The vendor confirmed he is now paid in full. Thank you for sending the Operation Roundup decals to attach to the hurricane spinner to finalize our project in Bulling Creek Township Park. Another requirement is we had to show proof that this was done. I attached the picture. That's not a feature you didn't have. I haven't really printed one out yet for myself, but I'll attach it before I send it. The volunteers came out to make it happen on December eighth, two thousand twelve. A reference, a video that, where we put the video up and showed the work done all that day. It says it's a link to a video I captured showing the volunteers. Workers' project completed under the positive leadership of the Bulling Creek Township Park Committee. Attached, please find copy of invoice marked paid in full for the purchase of hurricane spinner. I do have that. Barb got it for me. She contacted the Meyer Designs, had them send it paid in full. We should have it, have that already. A photo is also attached. On behalf of our township, thank you and Operation Roundup Foundation for making the new and safe hurricane spinner a part of getting our playground moved towards, meaning recommendations outlined in the public playground safety handbook regards to have a court panel. And as you witnessed, the Park Committee read the requirements, they read this letter, they passed a motion. I told them I wanted to bring it to your board for the opportunity for you to also sign this if you want to. But I am keeping the original. I'll make a copy of it before I send it. And I'll get that to you. That's the only thing you don't have. Got the picture, copies of the letters. Jenny should have that same invoice. It probably looks a little bit different. You put the four nine nine thirteen where the initial part was paid and the balance on six thirteen. But from my records, I'd still like those other receipts.
What? Other receipts?
If it lasts, a couple meetings, whenever I saw you last, I'd ask you for copies of all the expenses of the mulch and all the things that have been purchased for the other stuff that's in there.
He talked about the money that it costs to reinstall the merry-go-round. That shit's been taken up. So, hang on, that's that. Well, I'm not in favor of sending that letter out, Jeff, so that's my opinion. It's not all hundred percent factual there.
What's not factual?
Uh, there's some things that you're leaving out, so I'm not in favor of it. So, I'm gonna make a motion that this letter is not sent to the Operation Roundup. Until it is either revised or...
Well, wouldn't you like to revise? Well...
Come up with another copy.
We can't really do it that way because...
Sure we can.
We really can't because Park Committee's already agreed to it. There's no statutory requirement that our board make a resolution.
Sure, but let me tell you something. The Park Committee is not over the board of trustees. Okay? Just so you're aware of that.
That has nothing to do with...
Sure.
This contractual requirement that we have to finalize.
Sure. And I'm not in favor of sending this letter to the Operation Roundup.
So, noted.
So, noted. You're right. Make a note of it. So, we need to take a vote? And if it's a yes, send it. If it's a no, it's not gonna get sent.
I already explained what my actions will be on this.
I've already talked to county prosecutor. Jeff, would you like to call and talk to Amy? She will give you her legal opinion on it.
Well, I have the legal opinion. I'll read it.
Sure.
Because there was all this theater here about this letter you wanted me to do some manitomically very uncomfortable with. Okay? I'm gonna start it, read it from the start to finish. This should clear up any of this drama that's still lingering.
Can I get a copy of that?
You have it.
Can I get another copy of it?
Get it from Jenny.
Can I get another copy of that? I'm requesting a copy of that letter from you, Jeff.
I request that you don't interrupt me this time, and you let me finish what it says.
I'm requesting a copy in advance, so just make sure I get a copy.
You already have one.
I'm requesting a copy, Jeff.
I'm gonna attempt to read this. This will be public when I read it. This is what the attorney said on this matter.
The attorney is in here? Please state the attorney that said this.
On Tuesday, January twenty-ninth, four thirty-six P.M., Amy Thompson. She is our legal counsel. I understand there was this big investigation. I'm never gonna stand in the way of an investigation that is going to include me for some kind of wrongdoing. I say bring it on, get it checked out. But when you get the answer, when you get the answer, you got an answer. I have a question in reference to the legality, this is her question back. I have a question in reference to the legality of the removal of merry-go-round from the township park. My understanding of the situation is that the Park Committee applied for a grant to buy a new piece of playground equipment, hurricane spinner, with the intent of removing the merry-go-round. It is my understanding that the board never voted to approve of the grant application or of the removal of the merry-go-round. It is also my understanding that the board did not vote to prevent the purchase of removal of the merry-go-round either. Individual trustees objected, but never put it to an actual vote. There was an allegation that the merry-go-round was not up to code by the township insurance carrier, but neither the May twenty-first, two thousand twelve, or August twenty-first, two thousand twelve, letters from Ohio Plan Risk Management provided me... Provided to me support that contention. If I am mistaken in the statement of facts listed above, please let me know. Uh, and she's not mistaken, she just didn't have all the information, because it clearly outlines in the letters that it is to be up to the standards of the public playground safety handbook, which is also in all the grant writings and everything that was on the wall, everything in the record and everything that was recorded. I think this is a prime example of both the Park Committee and the board being too lax about parliamentary procedures. The Park Committee did not formally request permission to apply for the grant, buy the hurricane spinner, or remove the merry-go-round. But the board never voted to prevent that grant application purchase of the hurricane spinner or the removal of the merry-go-round either. I don't think any of these arise to illegal activity, but I do think it is sloppy governance on everybody's part. Resolve this, uh, I think the best way to resolve this issue is to move forward and learn what not to do from this situation. I recommend that the board conduct itself in a more formalized manner. Now, the board has already done that. We've all agreed to, uh, to do that. And there is a motion in books for that. Goes on to say only board members should be signing off on invoices and not delegating to the committee members, as this creates issues for both the board if they decide not to honor the invoice because they never approved the expenditure, and the committee member who may now find himself or herself personally liable as they acted without board approval. Better avoid all that by governing in the most professional way possible in the first place. So, there it is.
Can I get a copy of that, Jeff?
You have one. Jenny has one.
Requesting a copy.
You can get one from Amy. I'm done making you copies.
I'm requesting a copy of that letter from you. Okay? If you put that in your notes, I need a copy of that. And after that said, I'll make a motion that the letter Jeff proposed to write to the Energy Co-op, current Energy Co-op, Operation Roundup Foundation, to Margie Klein, not be sent by this board.
I'll second.
Okay, I guess we can have a discussion then. How do you want to handle the fact that we are not filling our obligations to finalize a grant-funded project?
Put the facts in there, Jeff. Revised it, whatever you have to do to make it factual. Put the whole truth in there.
Does anyone on the Park Wanted Committee want to speak on the behalf of there being anything factual there? Did you hear the letter read of the requirements that we have to do?
I said put all of the facts in there. You're putting...
Put the facts in, even while we didn't sign the check.
You put the facts in there.
You wrote the letter, Jeff.
Go ahead. Write your own letter. I'm gonna be submitting this letter, and we will fulfill our obligations.
This letter will not be sent out?
Yes, it will. When I put a stamp on it, it goes out.
Please take a vote, Jenny. After Mr. M.
Roll call, Dan.
You didn't answer my question. How are you, if this, if this isn't done, and it will be done, it'll be in the mail tomorrow. But if it's not done, how are you going to answer to this?
A simple letter can be drawn up. This is thank you for the, for the grant. Our obligation has been fulfilled. Here's the picture. Thank you very much. How hard is that?
I already did it. If you want to write your own letter, go ahead.
If that's what it takes, I'm sure I could do it. This one is not getting sent.
Yes, it is.
Roll call on the motion, Dan?
Yeah.
Hold on a second. When you send that, can I get a copy of it?
I've already told you I would do that. I don't have a copy of it with the signatures on it. I'll make that copy, so everybody has one. You do have the letters right there.
I'd like a copy also mailed to me. If you need forty-seven cents for stamp, I can get it back to you.
I'm not mailing your copies. You got the copy right there. All you need, but you don't have, is how it looks right here, with three signatures from the Park Committee and my signature on it. And I'm finished.
Take a vote, Megan.
Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
Jeff?
I abstain.
Everybody's hearing this, right? What's going on? This letter will not be sent.
As you're recording working, it's a no, right?
Yep.
Does it have to do with this letter, Ron? Go ahead.
What happens if filled up? I mean, it's, it's even useless.
If I do, then our obligations are fulfilled, and we are, have completed what we were supposed to do. That has been...
But you've gone against the vote of the board.
Absolutely.
I will be on the phone with Margie. I will be talking to her. When she receives this letter, I will get a copy from her, and I will be talking to the prosecutor's office.
Absolutely.
That's what will happen. What are you trying to do, Jeff? Make an ass out of this township or yourself?
I told you...
That's a simple question.
I told you I was finished with this.
I'd like an answer to that. Go ahead, Jeff. We'll see. Go ahead.
Yes, we will see.
Do you have a phone number for Margie?
In her letterhead, it's in the top there.
Not the one you wrote up?
You got the same stuff I have. If it's not in there, you'll have to look it up.
Yeah, I gotta email address for it. Oh, there is one here, you're right.
I have a basic question. This is an adnarr, it's part of the procedure. If a vote of the board is not required to do whatever you want to do, why do you have a move? I mean, I just don't understand that question.
You know, we just heard a letter...
It's not required in this case.
We just heard a legal opinion from the prosecutor that says that we need to, I guess, tighten up our procedures here at the board. That's what we're doing, and it's still not being followed. This isn't my township. I'm here for everybody, you know? I'm not gonna do whatever I want to do. I don't know how Dan feels, you know?
Yeah, I feel the same way.
You didn't answer the bigger question, how you, if I don't send this letter, which I will, make no mistake about it, I will.
Who goes send it to? Who goes send it to?
To Margie, who the person's made out to. Person that's required to get it, to show proof that this project was done and completed.
I just want to make sure you're gonna announce yourself and call my bluff.
Excuse me?
Go ahead. Keep talking, Jeff. Is that all we have in the Park Committee? All right. Unfinished business. The road bid.
Just got the one that...
Well, I looked over it. I reviewed it. I was kind of surprised that they were actually lower than the, than the engineer's estimate, but...
No, I think it's, the engineers did not include the colossacks for paving. And footed, I mean, yarded. So, that, we'll have to have the colossacks done, you know, it'll cost us a little bit extra than what the bid is. It won't be that much, I don't think, but you know what I mean?
Do we just want to have them?
I'd say just do them.
I can't see going around not the colossack.
Yeah.
Where did you find this out, Dan?
On the measurements. On the, you, uh, I had the roads measured. I get all the roads measured, so I know what's what.
Well, that's what the engineers, uh...
Yeah, but they didn't do it. They didn't, the engineers didn't measure the colossacks and put them on the, the pit.
Well, I'm a little bit disappointed because it was a little bit disingenuous, less meaning. You being the CEO, you get letters that everyone else doesn't. Do you have the contract printed out that they sent to you?
I received one thing.
It should be multiple, okay. Well, I found that available online, and there's several things. Uh, when you stated that we could rebid that, and I asked about setting another date, I managed to find that online, I printed it out. And, uh, it's not a physical possibility to rebid it. I called Kurt right after the meeting, he didn't think it would be. And then when I looked into it further, the, uh, there's a period of time for the, the whole bids to have to be completed, and that time has passed. So, you know, obviously, it just needs to be on the record that, uh, there was not an opportunity to send up for additional bids. But we could have at the last meeting if it would have been done immediately.
Why didn't you make the motion to do it?
Well, I didn't, I wasn't privy to the final agreement there until I found it online, and it specifies that. It's unfortunate that the bid person isn't here tonight, because there's also a schedule for when they have to complete it. Because that, that window's fairly tight, too. Do you have it? Does it, does it tell you there, it's got the schedule in that printout?
For the completion of the project? Yes, but I've also talked to Sue Spiker, and she said it can be adjusted.
Okay, well, there's a whole process you have to go through to do that.
Yes, but we can do that. If we don't get it done by August thirty-first.
That's pushing it quite, pretty quick, for a month's time on the notice.
The project manager, which is what I'm assigned, got a letter, too, and it basically, it's, she doesn't have that attached to it, but it references it. And that's how I was able to find it and see the details on the final, um... Do you have the form for request to proceed?
You were supposed to receive that.
Okay, I didn't receive it, but I printed it off. I saw, I went online, and there's a, the whole public can go and see every letter that's gone to the fiscal officer, to the project manager, and the CEO. The letter that I received said make sure that your CEO first does a request to proceed.
Okay, the letter that I received says the project manager, named in the agreement, will receive a separate mailing pertaining to your project requirements detailed on our website, list the website, including the request to proceed, contractual requirements for the bid documents, and reporting of in-kind or force account contributions.
Okay.
You are the project manager, and you should have received the request to proceed.
I did not receive it, but I read it, and I printed it off online, so in case you didn't have one, I do have it here tonight. But the first thing that we need to do...
Can I get a copy of that?
We're gonna have to fill it out and send it back.
Can I get a copy of that?
We're gonna fill it out, we'll give it to fiscal officer, and we can all get a copy if she makes one, okay? Now, what I did is I went ahead and prepared a resolution, because before we move forward, like I said, we have to do a request to proceed. We need official resolution to send the request to proceed. We need to do it tonight and work through everything on here. So, without any objection here, I'll go ahead, and here's the dates on the resolution, too. So without any objection here, I'll go ahead and, and here's the dates on the resolution, too. It's eight thirty-one, two thousand thirteen, when it has to be finished. Bidding process is to be completed by the fifteenth.
Where did you get the resolution?
I took it out of the information of that.
Where does it say that we have to have a resolution?
We, you don't want to do a resolution on a large hundred twelve thousand dollar grant?
We've already done all that.
No. I'll tell you what. Let me go ahead and read the resolution. The process we have to do. Once the resolution's made, it's gonna end that we're gonna request to proceed. They don't need the original. We need to get it as soon as possible to them. Online and maybe even on here. It says the original, or the original not required. So you keep that in the file, but fax it to them or via electronic. I move to proceed forward with Ohio Public Works Commission Grant Funded Project Number CQ three-two-Q as described below by the commission. Pursuant to Ohio Code one-six-four point oh-five and Ohio Administration Code one-six-four dash one dash two-one, this project grant agreement. This agreement is entered into July first, two thousand thirteen, which is, the date is on that. By and between the State of Ohio, acting by and through the Director of the Ohio Public Works Commission. Hereinafter variously referred to as the Director of the OPWC, located sixty-five East State Street, Street three-twelve, on Ohio four-three-two-one-five. And Bowling Green Township, Licking County. Hereinafter referred to as the recipient, located at one-five-eight-nine-oh National Road, Brownsville, Ohio four-three-seven-two-one, in respect of the project name Somerset Railway and Dogwood Lakes Paving, and as described in Appendix A of this agreement, to provide an amount not to exceed one hundred twelve thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars for the sole and express purpose of financing or reimbursing costs of the project as more fully set forth. In this agreement and that appendices attached here, too, subdivision code oh-eight-nine dash oh-seven-nine four-four, OPWC Project Grant Control Number CQ three-two-Q. In addition to the above, whereas section four, notice to proceed, works shall not convene on this project until the Director has issued a written notice to proceed to the recipient. Such notice will not be issued until the Director has issued, assured that the recipient has complied, complied with the recipient's page four. Responsibilities concerning OEPA plan approval when applicable. A notice to proceed shall be required for all project grant contractors. Whereas a request to proceed form is required to be sent to the Ohio Public Works Commission, outlined in the letter dated July first, two thousand thirteen. Care and for request to proceed. Project schedule. The project for which the provision of financial assistance is the subject of this agreement shall be pursued and completed in accordance with the following schedule. Activity start date, completion date, final design. Uh, there's blank. But I know they have, they probably have. They don't have a copy of the engineers on there. Uh, bidding process, May first, two thousand thirteen, oh-seven fifteen, two thousand thirteen. Construction, July thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, to eight thirty-one, two thousand thirteen. Motion prepared and read by project manager. And what is today's date? So that's my motion.
That one doesn't pass. You're not gonna send it, too, are you?
Well, if this one doesn't pass, uh, we have no grant. We have no...
I'm just asking a question. Yes, no?
I'm not sending it at all. It's gonna be handed to the fiscal officer. She is gonna get it too.
Where does it say that you needed to prepare a resolution?
I've gotta repair, resolution for being...
Where does it say?
Or, actually, there's been no motion actually to even award the bid at this point. That needs done first and then we need to do this. And we do have, it is fully required to have the request to proceed.
Sure. No doubt, man.
There's no second to it. As the project manager, I'm trying to do my job here.
There is no need for the resolution. If there was a need for the resolution, it would have been stated and they would have sent us a form copy that we could fill out. That's what they've done with every other resolution and every other...
I had to find out and get it offline.
Yes, but they told us we needed it.
Yes.
Okay, they said nothing about a resolution.
And then they also said that we'll get a letter back?
Right.
From the company?
They said nothing about a resolution.
That's after the request to proceed. That's what the form to move forward or something.
But they said nothing about a resolution.
I'm just trying to do my job to the, to the best of doing this. I am the project manager and I, you know, I'll only assume that the three of you have read everything from start to finish as well. And there's other things we have to address. You said you already talked to Sue. There's a place on this form, the Director, which is the person that runs the whole program, is the one that has to deal with changes on this form here. And that's on number three here, for project schedule. And there's also some errors, Jenny. I don't know how it happened. You're the one that submitted it. The description right there still says two inches. It doesn't say that one and a half, that, that it was addressed back to you.
The count, the engineers dropped to an inch and a quarter.
I understand that, but that was before that application was sent in, so maybe you sent the wrong one in or...
I didn't send, they changed it.
They changed it.
I had, I didn't see it. I didn't have it after they changed it.
My point is it needs addressed.
Okay, my point is it wasn't me that made the mistake.
The engineers did this.
No, it was all submitted, Jenny, at one, at the same time.
It was submitted and then they changed it. I didn't see it after it was submitted.
The point is...
After it was changed.
The point is, on the agreement, it still has the old amount and we need to deal with it under item three on this form. Any changes?
We don't need all that bull crap, no.
So you're calling an official resolution for a large sum of money for a grant project, what?
Official? You got stamped on there, official?
It would be if we had a second motion to move and proceed.
You have one there? You have stamped it official? Right before that, Jeff? Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, man, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, uh, I'm back here and back here, but we couldn't hear Jeff speak. We couldn't hear him. Bob couldn't hear him. I couldn't hear him. I don't know about him, but I was back here. I'd like to hear what he's got. I'd like for him to read again and speak louder or send me a copy. I mean, ask Brother Cracker.
Request a copy.
I want him to, uh, speak, stand up and speak. I want him to hear and read the whole thing back here or send me a copy.
There's no second to the motion, but I'll hand it to the fiscal officer. She's the one that, that is the record holder.
Request a copy from Jeff.
I'd like to...
So I'm assuming at this point we're not getting a second on that.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, yeah, I only sound like a Harry between race and four, Jim, you hear him?
Well, see, we never had to do all that before, did we, Jenny?
The resolution is not necessary.
What's he saying?
It's up to you guys.
I know that the timeframe's coming up and it's not gonna be done by, in August.
Yeah, well, in the vogue, that, that's only, uh, one month.
But they'll, they'll allow us to change it.
Yes.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have to work with them.
That's fine.
Cause they got work, they probably got work scheduled.
You need to back up a little bit. This board absolutely has to move a resolution to bid this out to anybody or to accept a bid from anybody. So you need to do that first.
I don't think they can base it on that.
You need to do it first. I make a motion...
Level jumble first.
I make a motion to accept a bid.
From?
From Smalls.
For how much?
For whatever the...
Hundred, where the copy I just got at?
Thank you, got it.
What do we want to allow extra?
We're gonna have to allow extra for the...
Their original, this one forty-two.
Cause the engineers didn't put the cul-de-sacs on the bid package.
Plus...
I think that should be a separate resolution. Obviously, it needs done at the same time.
Okay, well...
Are they gonna do this before the next meeting or no? Probably not.
Probably not.
Why don't we, we can award this and have them have a price for the cul-de-sacs by the next meeting? And we'll just have to take that out of pocket, right?
This request to proceed needs to be in there. It should have been in there already. If you go online and you look at all the other projects, most of them are already in there. And, uh, those people can proceed because they've gotten their approval back.
Well, we can't do anything until we have a meeting, Jeff. We can't hold a meeting without...
What kind of meeting?
We can't fill that out, turn it in, that kind of meeting. We gotta discuss...
That's why we're here right now. This must be done.
So you said it should have been turned in already. We couldn't make any motion until after July.
We could have a special meeting in...
Was it July? We could award it till after that. So our last meeting, we couldn't do nothing. We could accept a bid, but we couldn't award anything.
This meeting we're...
No, we could not?
We're awarded it right now to Smalls.
You could not, no. We could not have awarded it until we re, got this paperwork that says, yes, you can award it. Yes, you've rece, you're going to receive the money. You can award it now.
I can tell you where we are right now. Where are we on this, on this res, on this vote?
I thought you were gonna tell us.
He made a motion for Smalls Brothers to do it for a certain amount of money. Didn't get a second.
Not yet.
Okay, I'll second Dan's motion.
Roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes. Now, the next thing we have to deal with is the request to proceed and also the errors and changes that need to be sent to the Director.
No, do we have to make a motion to just, to go ahead and do the cul-de-sacs?
We don't know what's gonna cost to do it. If they're not gonna do it for the next meeting, they can have us some kind of number by the August meeting. If they're not gonna do it by August, whatever the date is, maybe.
Any of those changes you make on there, I highly recommend that we do it by...
Not making changes to the contract, Jeff.
Jeff? I'm sorry, wrong kid.
Ooh.
The request for change needs to be right...
Excuse me, excuse me, Jeff. Say that again?
I'm gonna continue and try to do this.
No, go ahead and say that again.
Are we gonna do this?
No, back up and say what you're gonna say.
I'm sorry I used the wrong name. That's my son's name, all right?
Then what was the phrase after that you used?
The phrase I'm using right now...
What was the phrase after that name that you used?
Ben, I suggest that we be professional together here and move forward.
Don't, don't come, too.
Exactly. Be professional, Jeff.
Okay, well, let me tell you something. Are we gonna do this or not?
Well, sure.
Cause if we don't, then we are throwing away a large amount of grant money.
Nobody said we weren't gonna do it.
This is the, okay, I move to fill out the request to proceed form.
That's his responsibility anyways, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Project manager, right?
And I've moved the motion forward.
Is there a second?
You, I'll second. You don't fill that out.
We have to do it tonight and Jenny needs to get it in.
Okay, alright.
Wait, roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ben?
Yeah.
Thought he was gonna fill it out.
He is, man.
Now, the fiscal officer can do it. She has to fill it in. She has to send it in.
I thought you just said you were gonna fill it out.
That's what I heard.
If you'd like me to fill it out, you still need to send it in.
Alright.
I can send it in.
So what do you want to do about the cul-de-sacs? Do we want to talk to them on price?
I thought we were on this piece of business, filling this form out.
We just, we just did that?
Yeah, you go ahead and fill it out.
Alright, well, we're gonna do it together because, especially on these changes.
Let's do that. Let's wait till the ends of public and jury if they wanna. Someone jury now, maybe. Just hold that thought. What we wanna do on that, what do you think?
No, we'll just, we'll have to get...
You know?
Why don't we get a price for the next one?
We get price, we could also tell them, you know, ask them, ask them if they'll do it for the same money per yard as what they're doing the rest of it for.
Oh, I'm sure they'll do it for the same, they'll do it for the same yard while they're there.
Right. But unless they do it and then then come back, yeah, or it's an extra hundred thousand dollars.
No.
If they'll do it for the same price per yard.
They, they do it all for the same price a yard because they're already there.
Right. You wanna do that to make?
Yeah, make a motion to, to do the cul-de-sacs, they'll do them for the same price per yard that they do the cul-de-sacs.
That's right.
Under discussion, we'll kinda spec that.
Can we do a roll call?
Can't really. We can have discussion after a second.
Have a discussion.
We can't really bid it out. We don't have a choice in the matter.
Don't have to bid that out because it ain't not much. It's not, it will be a big amount of money.
We have to, we can't not do the cul-de-sacs during the project.
So they're gonna get done?
Yeah.
As long as they get them the same price per yard.
Okay, item number three here. I don't think it's all gonna fit in here, Jenny, of these changes that need to be sent to the Director. And the bidder is not here, so I don't know if they're gonna be able to adhere to the project schedule or not, so that...
We already know that it's not gonna be done by August thirty-first.
Okay, well, that's one of the changes we need to change.
Jenny talked to Sue, correct?
Yes.
And she said that they would work with us.
Listen, Jeff.
If there was a date change.
Sue's not the Director. The Director, the Director of the Public Works.
So go ahead and put that in there, that we need to change that completion date.
You said you were gonna do it, didn't you, Dave?
Come on.
Alright.
Let's, let's...
We're a little on here, not immature. Let's just... That's all they had on road bid. It's gonna get done, okay?
So how, there's other mistakes there. They need, they, it's, we need to adhere to the con...
I said we would do it after we're done with the meeting, okay? So public and jury, so they don't have to sit here through all this.
So these changes on this grant, you don't want to do by motion? The board needs to agree to send this, when Jenny sends this to the Director of Ohio Public Works.
We can do that again?
Because they have to actually prove the fact that we are doing that. They're gonna get this and they, it says right here, send attachments. With all that needs changed, yeah, I think you're gonna need to write something up or type it up or something because you have to address the errors and have to address the dates. Uh, the cul-de-sac additions, should probably be noted there.
You don't have the second, it's the cul-de-sac addition and the date change.
I don't even know if cul-de-sac name needs to be in there, does it?
No, it don't need to be in there.
If we're bidding that out, or we're paying the separate price out for that, it's gonna be...
The cul-de-sac ain't in...
Have them do a separate bill.
The cul-de-sac's not even in the, the bid.
We did not do a roll call bill on the last motion. Dan made a motion for them to do it at the same price. Ben seconded the motion. Roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
Jeff?
How do you know they'll do that, Dan? You haven't talked to them?
I'm sure they will. Anybody, if you're right there, just order a couple more truckloads of asphalt. You're not moving nothing in, just do it.
So you're doing this under the assumption they're gonna do it?
I'm, I'm pretty sure they will.
The motion is, if they'll do it for the same price per yard, go have them do it. If they say, we can't do it for that, it's gonna be more, we won't have them do it.
And how, and then what?
What's hard?
What would we do with it, Ben?
What are you voting on? What is your vote on the motion?
I just wanted clarification on, you know, Dan sent that...
If they're not gonna do it, then we'll figure it out when that happens.
They're not gonna do it before the next meeting anyway, Jeff. I, I...
And they're not gonna come down here and make a spatial trip just to do cul-de-sacs.
And if they're not gonna give us the same price, Dan won't let them do it.
Well, what date are you gonna put on this change on the...
What is your vote on the motion?
Well, I'd like to, it's a point of information here. When is it gonna, when is the new deadline, Dan, that you're gonna be comfortable putting it?
I don't know what their schedule is and what the weather's gonna be like.
To fill out the request to proceed, we need to provide them with a date.
Yeah, give them three months.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So what is your vote on the motion?
I don't really have a choice in the matter. It's yes.
You have a vote?
I actually don't have a choice on the matter. If you read the codes on road improvements, all three trustees have to vote an affirmative for it to move forward. And I'm not gonna not have a project go forward that's actually been a goal of mine personally since oh-five to get Dogwood Lakes paved.
You're the one that's...
So my vote's yes.
We done with that?
Just don't forget to get that done.
Yeah, I'll fill this out for you, Jeff. I'll do it.
It's for the board, it's for the township.
No, I'll do it. It's okay.
We'll do it.
I'll do it.
Okay, when you do it, please provide us all with a copy that you have done.
I'm gonna scan it and email it to you.
I'd like a hard copy. I, as long as it's not...
You got that, I'm big pool farm, can't it?
Dan, I'm the project manager. I'm responsible enough to try to take care of this paperwork and our obligations.
Well, the project manager is supposed to fill this out. So why can't you fill it out?
Because it takes a board to make the decisions.
And the project manager's gonna get the letter back in return that we need to send in.
That's not true, Ben. What it'll do, it'll go, I hope they send one, but they will post on their website the next step, authorization to move forward or, I don't know the terms right off the, but that's what's the next step. And hopefully that'll be a quick process so company can get in and get it done.
Cut, move forward. Trash. You guys have anything to trash? Only thing I had was that one complaint called to go. called they go, I remedied that, I guess, I mean, there wasn't really remedy to it, it was, probably I started calling him, I didn't get a response, I didn't talk to him for first week to pick the trash up on my way.
What about update from Amy? That's where you left it last, last meeting?
No update, I haven't seen nothing on it. It's all limbo there.
Do either of you have a problem with me speaking with Amy to try to-
No, go for it.
Get some answers on this?
Do it for it.
Because I've been in this limbo state for a little too long, and I don't know why, but-
You're more than welcome to go talk to her.
If you don't mind, do that by motion so I can go and speak on behalf of-
I make a motion that, yeah, but Jeff, go talk to her.
I'll second it. I'll ask for a roll call on that, please. The motion is for me to go talk to Amy about the trash.
Roll, oh, wait, wait, I take that, I take that back, I did have another complaint on that yesterday, actually, the CMI was still picking up in Dogwood Lakes. So if you do go talk to Amy, you need to tell her that, the CMI is still picking up in Dogwood Lakes.
The whole point-
In the Bowling Green Township park.
The whole point of this was that the board as a whole moved forward to proceed. And that's what we're waiting for answers on.
Well, you're right, you're right, she can tell you the same thing she told me.
Okay, roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
There's none, you can tell the same thing that she told me.
Ben?
Of thing.
Okay, I'll call her the next couple of days since the board as a whole has decided for me to do that.
I'd like to make a motion and buy some comforter chairs for all those people sitting out here. Alright, any other unfinished business? Pretty cut and dry, I don't think we have anything, still remember that I can think of? New business?
We just got, well, that backup, got the jumper pump went out. And we do have the fuel tank fixed and back in.
Any new business?
Nope.
Yeah?
I don't think so.
You want a public comment?
Yeah.
Can I do?
I'd like to thank Jack and ours hedges for donating money to buy the flags for the park community, I think I was very nice of them, showing them that they care about their area, so I'd like to thank ours and Jack hedge. Also, I was real impressed with this, Marcia Phelps, the court clerks, when she come in, she introduced herself, and she was real pleased with the attendance that we had, and then before she left, she commented how the, you know, everything was being conducted. So I'd like to thank Benji Huff for conducting this meeting in a manner that pleased our circuit courts, so I'd like to thank you, Ben. The last thing, Jeff, I could not hear you back here as some other people could, so I would like to have you to send me a copy so that I can look at if I have any questions next month, I can, so I appreciate if you send me a copy.
The fiscal officer has those, she can copy them for you, sir.
You requesting a copy from Jeff, correct?
Yes, I am, because he was reading it, and I want to hear, you know, and see if, if he was glad if someone liked it from Jeff, so.
Very good.
I've already told you what'll happen there.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Fiscal Officer, we have a request for a copy, I'd like to be so noted to provide to Mr. Skinner. Excuse me?
Alright, we'll go move on. Mr. Skinner asked for a copy, if you would be so kind as to send him a copy. That would be great.
I've already so noted my statement on it.
Go ahead.
I'm Patty Voland, and it's been brought to my attention that Mr. Skinner correctly identified as a reporter on an edited version of videotaped trustee meeting that appears on YouTube. I would like the record to reflect that I have never attended a Bowling Green Township meeting as a reporter despite what might be edited into a videotape. As a journalist, it would be unethical for me to attend this meeting as a reporter. I've attended every meeting here as a private citizen because I live in this community. I will continue to attend these meetings despite the attempts to discredit my journalistic integrity with false accusations from the editor of videos that appear on YouTube. And I want to make sure that everyone heard me clearly on that, so when it appears on YouTube, people will know I'm attending as a private citizen.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Watkins, and I'd like to thank Danny Van Buren and Ben Huff for getting that playground put back in the playground. I bring my grandkids in here all the time, and that's ninety-nine percent of what they play on and what they have fun with. That's the best thing we've got in our park.
We'd like to hear that, thank you.
Uh, I'm Barb Slig, I would also like to thank President Ben Huff and Dan Van Buren and other residents of Bowling Green Township for mulching the park so our children are safe when they fall.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes, please, I got a question.
Sure.
I would like, if possible, to get a copy or records of the zoning inspector's jobs, time cards, and what she spent all my tax money on, if that's possible, is that legal?
Sure, um, kind of, I guess, say, you want copies of time cards?
Yes, sir.
What else?
You know, whose property they were spent on?
Okay.
And what happened to all of these write-ups that people complained about and this, that, and the other?
What, her timesheet, okay, you get a copy, I, that's correct, timesheet, it'll specify on there, you know, what she spent time working on, whether computer work, out in the field, whatever.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Do you all call that, that's good? Is that it?
Yes, and how they were resolved, and the ones that have been resolved and the ones that haven't.
Would you like me to bring those to the next meeting or mail them to you?
Probably mail them to me, please.
I would like to give Jeff a public records request in writing.
Fiscal Officer, we have a record request for the email that, that was sent to you and us, we were copied on it, from Mrs. Voland.
I'd like to read it, Jeff, who's handed you?
She's asking for a copy of something that was read tonight, and that's-
It's a correspondence, public records request, I'd like to read it, yeah?
She wants a letter from Amy Thompson.
That's not what it says, doesn't say she-
Letter from Amy Thompson that you, Jeff Corpenning, read at the July thirtieth, two thousand thirteen trustee meeting. This is a legal public information request. Fiscal Officer has that, and she needs to fill those requests.
Again, I'll read it. All of it, in the entirety. Uh, says, Jeff Corpenning, I am requesting a copy of the letter from Amy Thompson that you, Jeff Corpenning, read at the July thirtieth, two thousand thirteen trustee meeting. This is a legal public information request, Patty Voland. I believe it's directed towards you.
And I believe I addressed it, and our fiscal officer who holds the record has a copy of it, and I'm not going to say it again.
So you're going to fulfill the request? So you asked that? Okay. Alright, any other public comment? Go ahead.
Thank you for reading that letter out loud.
You're welcome.
I was talking to Mr.-
I, the letter that she referenced is the one I read, so you all heard what she was wanting a copy of.
I'm sorry, Mr. Corpenning, I'm talking about the whole letter that Mr. Hopper had.
No problem, I like it out in the entirety, I want everybody to know what's going on here, so there's the whole thing.
What's your name, sir?
Tom.
What's your name?
Tommy.
What is it?
Tommy Clay, Tommy Clay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment?
I, I would like to have one. I, I appreciate living near the, the park, uh, how well-maintained it's been lately. Uh, the grasses have been grown up, it's gotten a lot of weeds, it's easy to get caught out of my own yard that way from time to time. I think it's, it's, uh, more attractive to our, to our children and the community, it's safer, the ticks and all that type of thing, um, and it looks nice, and I think that's important, that we keep the community looking nice as much as possible. So I, I saw you, Ben, Jack, I've seen a few times, and anyone else that was involved in that, uh, thank you. It looks nice, and that's, that's important to me.
Jeff, we appreciate positive comments.
One other thing, I, I haven't been to a meeting for a while, so I do have to say that I'm a little shocked at how uncivil, uh, the conversation is at the table. I would hope that that would improve at some point. I, it's uncomfortable for most of us here. Uh, I, I would, I would ask that there would be some type of improvement, and, um, that's, that's something that I think a lot of people feel but won't, won't state out loud. And it's probably a reason that a lot of people don't come to these meetings, that plus all the, the videos, a lot of people are uncomfortable with that. But that, that, that is a concern of mine, the other one is the name calling that Jeff Corpenning did to you. I don't think that's, that's really needed at a, at a meeting such as this, it's, it's very unprofessional, and it brings that level of professionalism down. So I would ask that that, those kind of practices be settled. It feels, it feels threatening to, to a lot of people here, and so I would ask that that, that be refrained from in the future.
Mr. President, I, I would, I would agree with this gentleman there, but I, I think that the name calling towards trustee Corpenning would stop too. It goes both ways, not, we're not, you know, it's going to go both ways, you know, not just one way.
And I'd-
I agree.
Yeah, definitely.
I agree completely. I just didn't hear other than that one today.
Yeah, there's very many. This, this guy here, in the red shirt, he might do stuff that aggravates everybody, but I've never heard him scream and stomp and slam and pound the table in any of the meetings I've been at, but I have seen others.
We, we all have seen very much of it, you're right.
I've seen others do it, in fact, when everybody was kind of gone, and if the tape was still rolling, yep, that was terrible.
Sure, and I addressed it, and I knew the tape was rolling, and I, and I want everybody to know that, that, that somebody stole my property, you know, and if somebody stole anybody's property in here, they would be upset about it, and I was upset.
I just think civility is important now, nowadays, um, you know, in my home, in my, in my community, or in a meeting like this, between, between township residents, and township residents and, and the board, and between the boards.
People are going to have to quit thinking that they own the township, the community, not-
That's right.
Here, another person there that, that think they're high rollers and they're just regular peons like me.
It seems like Jeff is always quoting revised code, this and this, and this, and this, and and then you said Amy says, you need to, you need to do this stuff in a legal manner, and, and from my way of seeing it, you know, not knowing all of this, is that it looks, it always looks like he's trying to do it by a certain rule, and that everybody else is not. It gets aggravated with him, and that, that's the way it always works.
And I'll disagree with that, uh, I, I'm not an attorney, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not any of those, when I need legal advice that has to do with the township, I contact Amy, and, and there's been many, many situations that I've had to contact her on. One of them was the letter that Jeff-
So Jeff is always wrong?
I didn't say that. I did not say that. And I'll, and I'll lay it out there, Jeff has a lot of good ideas, I don't care who wants to hear that, who's done one of them.
But it seems like this whole room is against him, the whole room's against him.
I'm not, no, I'm not.
It seems like it, I have no problem.
I have no problem with Amy, President. Or the fiscal officer.
Well, I can tell you, our family is not that way.
You know, one, one thing I do disagree with, and, and it's happened here on this board many times, when there's a board decision made, that's how it should be.
That's right.
I'm not here for myself, I'm here for everybody. I'm here for my family, I'm here for your family, I'm here for everybody, okay? I'm not making decisions that are just better myself at all, okay? But when a board decision is made, that's what it should be.
And like I said, I hadn't been here for a while, and then I heard, I heard Jeff call him that name, and it just, it shocked me. And I think it's out of his frustration, there's no doubt, but at, at a board meeting, it's the time to refrain from that stuff. And that's all I'm saying, it's, it's a little awkward for me.
You can catch up on YouTube.
I don't watch that, so.
You, you'd be shocked.
I don't have time.
You'd be shocked.
We had a full house tonight, I appreciate everybody coming, uh, most definitely, I'd like to see people here, I encouraged everybody to come to the meeting, so, um, if there's not a public comment, we're gonna-
I do have one.
Go ahead.
They made the comment, this isn't their township, this is our township. I'm damn proud of our township, I always have been. I've been here for sixty years, and I'm happy to help.
Well, I feel like this township is dead, there is no life here. That is honest truth, there is no life, there is no businesses, there's, nobody's allowed to do anything, and everybody's always writing somebody up for everything that they try to do to make a living.
Well, let's work together.
Yeah, I agree.
People say they, uh, nobody wants to live here because of the way it looks, it's not that. What are they going to do? What are they going to do next to live in? The Dollar General up there is probably the biggest thing that's ever happened here.
There's anything here.
And it ain't even in this township, there's nothing here, you can't make a living in that shit.
It's not, it's not going to happen overnight, you know, but we can all work together to, to make some kind of change on that.
We haven't gone out of the way to bother anybody, in fact, we bought our property, we bought it way down along the road, even people may come and say, well, gee, I couldn't see nothing from the road, so I had to fly over and hit it like that. So why is, you can go to that extent? You know, I don't understand that, why can't just meet people?
Well, I will try to come to more, I'm sorry I haven't been to more, and, uh, I just would like to see improvement, I mean, that's my personal opinion, and I, I don't disagree with what you guys are saying, and, but, but thanks, thank you for listening.
Well, thank you everybody for coming, um, we're going to fill out this sheet here, as a group we'll fill out, and, and I'm going to pay you, so if, if you guys want to stick around, you're more welcome to.
Seems you're a little too comfortable.
No, no.
Thank you.
I, I do have-
We have, we have one more.
I would like to question Patty, we have a zoning sign, uh, we have a zoning appeals board, we have a zoning commission, we have a planning commission, none of which are recognized, why is the board any more important than any other board?
Would you like to see something else, though?
I would, yes.
It's not a bad idea, yeah, so I guess people may lose all the committee, and, I mean, there's sometimes that I have to look through the paperwork to remember we're all committed, so. Definitely, let's, uh, let's see if we can come up with something. Maybe we can have a board with, you know, all the committees on it, and, you know, maybe so we can take it kind of easy or something, so, we'll come up with some ideas.
Thanks.
Thanks again, everybody, you're more welcome to say.
I move that we fill out the form here, so we can get that business done.
You're going to sign Jeff's?
Yeah, we'll do that first, then sign Jeff's.
We're going to talk around, then we'll sign Jeff's.
Do. I dropped off, I dropped off.
Oh, yeah.
Put that kind of view, Jeff, the contact information, email address, sort of, and stuff like that.
No, that doesn't have to be, that needs to be Bowling Green Township and the, the address, your, your box or, or fiscal address, you don't have to contact for it. I would use the specific information. You don't like, when you get past the basic stuff, can you tell me what you're reading so we can work through it together as a board like you stated?
Number one, flood daily reduction standards.
I called the Lincoln County water and soil because I wanted to make sure that I knew the proper answer on that, talking about flood plan, right?
It's a project located within a hundred-year flood plan.
Okay, when I spoke with him, he looked on the map, so I didn't know, uh, I didn't know for sure, and I didn't want to mark it, and he said that that is not in a hundred-year flood plan. And he said that that is not in a hundred-year flood plan.
So if the check knows, that's received, it's section two. So no, section two. Water supply project, attached checklist.
It's not a water supply project, so...
Number three is the most important one, the CEO needs to contact, request the director of the program. Everyone's have to approve that, the public works director.
Project schedule? The local federal project schedule will change.
Was that done by a motion on the project schedule?
Given three months, yes.
You need to put that in there, there's a request for an extension.
Let's put all their requests to extend that by October 31st, 2013.
And we have to address the issues, for whatever reason, that were not changed. The agreement still says two inches. And you need to put on there what the actual estimate says.
I thought it said an inch, did it say two inches or an inch and a half?
It says six inches, I think.
What's the estimate, that's a problem?
It says six.
As per the engineers, whatever they're calling that, has a title on it. Engineers' most current estimate or something. Agreement needs updated to reflect the engineers' one and a half inches as opposed to two inches or something.
Attention, a quarter.
Just make sure you get it, it says two in the agreement.
As per engineers', I think that's what it changed from two inches to two inches.
Yeah.
Now, the estimate's not gonna say anything about these additional cul-de-sac areas.
No, that's...
So it doesn't need addressed for these concerns.
No, the cul-de-sacs don't have nothing to do with the issue.
If you don't mind, Jenny, what does the exact description say where it talks about the two inches? If there's anything else we need to address that's not correct?
The project process proposes to code the existing road surface, which is either chip and seal or asphalt, with two inches of asphalt ditching and grain, side slopes, for proper drainage and compacted under rim as needed. See engineer's estimate and project application for approved bid items and quantities.
Number four, vendor, destination, contractor, supplier, consultant. The award tonight was bided, was awarded to Smalls Brothers, you have their name and address.
And online, after they send this, they, I believe they're gonna post that, the name of that award vendor online too. However, Paul, Jenny, it said it could be sent by regular mail, fax, or sent electronically. It doesn't say anything about faster, but it doesn't have to be original, so however you're comfortable getting it done as soon as possible, because we need to get that back, so the company will be able to do whatever they need to do. Get it in their schedule.
Scope work, paving.
What?
Scope of work. Yeah, paving.
Here's scope of sand. Contracted help. Send that motion that declares 1,000, or 119... I think they had paid that motion, didn't I, Jenny? And that...
That's for the total bid of the job, right?
Yeah, that's the contract.
Start date, estimated completion date.
You're gonna have to put what the date, you know, that's according to Dan's discretion, that date, that's what I was trying to talk to you about before.
They're not gonna know, because...
No, they're not gonna know.
They're gonna need to use the date that you put up there.
Today, and date October 31st.
Has to be prior to, definitely prior to what you're proposing to extend it to.
Right, we put start date today, and the end date, estimated completion date, October 31st.
Yeah, that's what I'd say.
Yeah, maybe that?
Yeah, as long as they approve it, and allow us to proceed, you need to have it. Hopefully, they'll be sooner than that. Did you drive around within this time, Ben?
Uh-huh.
Did you drive around within this time, get any feel for kind of schedule, or when they were thinking they could...
Oh, I don't know.
Come on, I suppose sign, or he's supposed to sign.
What's it say?
Project manager.
Authorized signature.
It doesn't say who you decide.
Local authorization.
Oh, you already approved the motion to fill this out, didn't you, not? I move to sign this on behalf of the board as the project manager, through the question, to proceed. Second? I'm requesting you do this officially.
I'll say it, it was good and done.
All right. We had a little call then, instead of the... Please.
Dan, real call.
Yeah.
Ben, Jeff.
Yes. Like I said earlier, I'd like to have a copy, just so I could keep track of what we sent down. Do you have a way to fax?
Yes, sir, I do.
Is that what you think you'll do?
Yes, sir.
Is that assault it, do we have to deliver it anymore, or do we have any more?
That's all we got, yeah.
Did we take a whole?
Yeah.
How much did we get, we're supposed to get thirty-five times?
Yeah, we got eight friends, another...
About thirty-five times.
Yeah.
Do you have a list of checks, I know it's on the back, is everything on the back, actually?
There is one check that is not on the back, and that's been the one for Ohio and then for him. Just because I printed the list before I printed the check.
I'm gonna go ahead and start reading these. Number 4260, M N C O, road bed legal notice, $217.98.
Do you have a motion?
I make motion papers.
You haven't done that yet?
All right.
Second I have is 4268, Ohio Public Entity Consortium, 25830.
That's the only one that's not on the list.
Oh, that's the one. What method did Megan want that paperwork back, that deadline's coming up here?
It's in the letter, I don't know.
On the ninth, I think that's what it is.
I'm not sure what it says.
Oh, the ninth.
You guys don't have a way to get it to her or send it to her?
4261, Hydro Supply Company, supplies $1.76. You do have a receipt of those copies I gave you?
I do. Now.
What's been happening with these receipts and stuff I leave down here?
I don't know, I didn't...
I only come down here once a month, I don't know what happens.
That's okay, you don't have to work.
No.
4262, Fargo Salt Contract, $1,263.36.
Have to go through the Hopewell to get the mail now, the gray shot.
Well, most of the things I've changed, our...
4268, Lowe's Companies, $28.11.
But most of the bills and stuff I've changed to my current address.
Is this building supplies or something, cleaning supplies for Bill?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Lowe's, 2811. 4264, Smalls Asphalt Paving, $426.60 for cold mix. 4265, Napa Auto Parts, $14.98. 4266 for Lumber Town, $19.65 for concrete mix. Now, Recycling, 4267, $182.97 for asphalt grindings. 4254, 62289, Jeff Corpenning. 4255, Jenny DePaul, $890.70. 4256, Jack Richard, Pedges, you have touches. Benjamin Pup, 4257, 62219. 4258, Daniel Nelson, Van Durin, 62081. 4259, $450.37, John W. Watkins. If you don't mind, can you give me copies of these?
Sure.
Thank you.
Email certified, mail, fax, hand delivery, not on stage.
If you're leaving stuff down here like I do, and it's walking out, you know, then we need to do something about that.
Hundred percent.
I move to adjourn.
No, second.
What'd you leave here to walk out here?
Well, the receipt I left down here just at that park meeting.
She said she got it.
I was like...
Yeah, I saw it.
Oh, you did get it, oh.
It was here, I did not get any copies of whatever you said, the letter or whatever, I did not get those. And I had no idea what that receipt was for.
So you did get it.
Because it didn't say anything.
If you don't need that copy of it, can I have it then? I gave you another one tonight, can I have that?
Was that your only copy?
Yeah.
Because it says what it's for on the copy.
That copy store there, that's the receipt they provide, they don't have the name on it, apparently. Think I moved to adjourn, didn't I?
Yep.
Give me a second. Jenny, you have that, you need to fill it.